Good evening, welcome to the October 27th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Action Session. Call to Order and the Announcement of Public Meetings in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been sent to the retrospect and posted on the Bulletin website, Borough Social Media, and posted on the Bulletin Board in Borough Hall and is being held in person as well as on Zoom. May you please rise and pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's lead with to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bernadette, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nicole.
Here.
Commissioner Troy.
Here.
Commissioner Seidell.
Here.
We're going to start the night with proclamations. November is a great month for the Navy, for America and the Marine Corps, as well as Veterans Day, and I'm going to turn it over to our resident veteran, Frank Troy, to do the proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In no particular order, although the Navy's first.
Like a lead balloon on air for an army.
They know deep down inside. Don't get them started. But no, before I read it, I am a proud naval officer. I served for six years for this great country and in this great Navy. And October 13th was the Navy's birthday, 250 years, starting out fighting the Barbary Pirates, and we've progressed quite a bit since then. So, the proclamation goes as follows: Whereas on October 13th, 7075, the Continental Congress authorized the creation of the United States Navy, launching a maritime tradition that has safeguarded our shores, secured global peace, and advanced American interests across the seas. And whereas the Navy has played a vital role in every era of nations' development, from the Revolutionary War to modern humanitarian missions embodying the values of honor, courage, and commitment. And whereas the Borough of Haddonfield acknowledges the Navy's enduring connection to our community, including its recruiting presence on South Haddon Avenue, and the service of residents who have proudly worn the uniform and sailed under the Stars and Stripes. And whereas we pay tribute to all Navy personnel, past and present, whose dedication and sacrifice have strengthened our nation and inspired generations of service. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Borough of Haddonfield does hereby recognize October 13th, 2025, as the 250th anniversary of the United States Navy, and encourages all residents to honor the legacy and continued service of the Navy in defense of our freedoms. And I know we have at least one Navy person here. Do we have any others? All right. Thank you. And we do have a few proclamations, and then what I'll do is ask all veterans in attendance to stand in solidarity for Veterans Day and also to acknowledge both the Navy and the Marine Corps birthdays. What's that?
Pictures at the end.
Yes, yeah. Which leads me to my next proclamation. Whereas on November 10th, 1775, the Continental Congress established the United States Marine Corps at Tunne Tavern in Philadelphia, marking the birth of a fighting force renowned for its courage, discipline, and unwavering commitment to duty. And whereas the Marine Corps has served with distinction in every major conflict in our nation's history, upholding the values of honor, courage, and commitment in defense of freedom and democracy. And whereas the Borough of Haddonfield recognizes the enduring legacy of the Marine Corps, whose regional roots trace back to our neighboring city of Philadelphia, and whose persistence has been felt locally through Marine Corps recruiting offices on South Haddon Ave, offering our residents a path to serve. And whereas we honor all Marines, past and present, who have answered the call to serve, including those from Haddonfield and the surrounding community, whose sacrifice and valor reflect the highest ideals of citizenship. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Borough of Haddonfield does hereby recognize November 10th, 2025, as the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps. Next is our proclamation for Veterans Day. Whereas for generations, millions of Americans have answered the call to serve, taking the sacred oath to defend and preserve our nation's ideals of liberty and democracy. These patriots represent the best of us. On Veterans Day, we honor their service, dedication, and valor, and are forever grateful for their sacrifice. And whereas our nation has only one truly sacred obligation, to properly prepare and equip our service members when they are sent into harm's way, and to care for them and their families when they return home. For our 19 million veterans, that means ensuring that they have access to support and resources for a future of security, opportunity, and dignity. Whereas so many of our veterans carry the scars from their service, both visible and invisible, and it's our nation's responsibility to help them heal. Too many veterans and service members have considered suicide or taken their own lives, and addressing this tragedy is a national responsibility. Whereas on Veterans Day, we honor our nation's veterans, who have given so much to protect our freedoms and the freedom of others around the globe. They represent the highest ideals of our country. While we can never fully repay the debt we owe these heroes, we will honor their service. We also salute and show gratitude for all who ensure our armed forces remain strong, united, and unmatched. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of the Borough of Haddonfield, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day. And thank you to Post 38 for being here tonight. And our final one is World War II Veterans Remembrance Month. And in my family, I actually have two grandfathers who fought in World War II. One grandfather, because he was older and lied about his age, actually fought in World War I. And one fought in the other Battle of the Bulge. Whereas in a proclamation for World War II Veterans Remembrance Month, we are reminded that since our country's birth, Americans have responded to military threats against liberty and democracy, whether at home or in remote areas in the world. We have long recognized that our veterans of World War II are a special bunch of people, often heralded as the greatest generation, that have been a major resource to our nation. Whereas World War II has been recognized as the most significant event of the 20th century. Without the sacrifice of those who fought the Axis aggression, Americans would not have the freedoms and opportunities they enjoy today. Whereas the World War II Memorial was dedicated to what has often been heralded as the greatest generation, the memorial has a threefold purpose. Whereas to honor the more than 16 million men and women who served in uniform, and the more than 400,000 Americans who died in the war, as well as millions more who supported the efforts at home. Whereas commemorate the entire nation's participation in that war. Whereas to honor the high moral purpose and idealism that motivated nations' call to arms, and to serve as a lasting tribute to the spirit, sacrifice, and commitment of the American people to the common defense of the nation, and to the broader causes of peace and freedom in the world. Whereas the sons and daughters of Haddonfield in no small way rose to the challenge of World War II and served their country valiantly, over there or at home, as appropriate. Some gave all, all gave some. After the war, these same sons and daughters continue to serve their community through hard work, sacrifice, and reliability. Still, as members of American Legion Post 38, and other community clubs and activities, they continue to give back. Whereas it is for this reason that the Borough of Haddonfield has decided to give back in a very small way to our members of the greatest generation. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of the Borough of Haddonfield, do hereby proclaim November 25, 25, as World War II Veterans Remembrance Month. And if I could ask all of our veterans to step forward.
Thank you. How'd I do? Okay, good. I wrote the first two. We lost them in 2014.
And then, same vein of honoring our veterans, community conversation for the National Party of 38, their next session on President of the Republican Party, Senator Trump, is at Haddonfield 100, the century of service, the three board veterans, US First Marine Lieutenant Commander, the 59th, US Army Air Force, the Second Lieutenant, and plus PD Hero, who's aged 100, and the USDA Chief Petty Officer with the Red Young 102. And go up and hear your stories, go by the students, out of the memorial high schools, then at 5th, April 19th, 7th, together, first Baptist church, who had here, this is the second, in your community conversation. Thanks, Ron.
So, Jeff, I'll, real quickly, the high school kids, three of them, are going to interview the three veterans. They're going to put together a presentation, and they're going to run the show in that night. I'm just going to sit in the background.
And you should.
As a nurse, though, it's a great way for these young people to learn how to bridge that general shot. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thanks for everything that you've presented. So, the last proclamation of the evening honors the Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the Borough of Haddonfield, we have acknowledged that our community is located on the ancestral and traditional territories of the Lennin Alaphe people, who have lived in harmony with this land for thousands of years. Whereas the Lennin Alaphe, Zanbi, original people, serve as students of these names, and were raised, found respect and wisdom. And whereas the history, culture, and contributions of Native American people are an essential part of the heritage of our nation, our local people, and their stories and teachings that over and over are the lives of our children. Whereas Native Americans have demonstrated extraordinary resilience in preserving their cultures, language, and traditions despite centuries, are profoundly versed in justice. And whereas November has been designated the State of American Heritage Month, providing an opportunity to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories of Native Americans, and to recognize the ongoing contributions to our society. Whereas Borough of Haddonfield is committed to fostering an understanding, respect, and meaningful relationship with Native American communities, and educating our residents about true history and contemporary realities of indigenous peoples. Now therefore be resolved in recognition of the contributions of Native American people, that we, the Commissioners of the Borough of Haddonfield, County Council, and City of Jersey, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025, the Native American Heritage Month.
Oh, no, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, all right, gentlemen, dismissed. Wow. This is like a bathroom light.
Is that a dimmer?
All right, so next.
It's dark.
No, 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 it was just, yeah, it was dark. It's okay. Please. Yeah, well, they're just, it's not my best light. All right, so, next, we're moving to public comment period for items listed on the agenda. This is the time for you to speak in person or on Zoom for up to five minutes on topics related to the agenda. May I get a motion to open the floor?
Motion.
In favor.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor. Lead you to it.
Do a roll call, right? Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. The floor is open for comments of up to five minutes on topics related to the agenda. Seeing none in the room, I'll move to Zoom. Any person on Zoom, either raise your hand and the chief will unmute you. All right, seeing none, I'm going to move to close the comment period on items on the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. The next, we're going to move to ordinances. This is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance 2025-12, Amending Chapter 109, entitled "Filming Commercial." This is the second reading in public comment period, so I will, I will get a motion to open the comment period? Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. Floor is open for any public comment on amended Chapter 109, commercial filming, on its second reading and adoption. Seeing none in the room, moving to Zoom. Any comments? Seeing none, I would like to move to close and adopt on second reading, 2025-12, amended Chapter 109, Filming Commercial. Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. The next is Resolutions Under the Consent Agenda. Resolutions below have been placed on the consent agenda by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these individual items unless requested by one of the three board members. I will read the list as follows. Agenda item 136, Authorization to Pay Vouchers. 137, Authorization to Issue a Check for the Overpayment of Taxes. Item 138, Authorization to Grant Total Exempt Veteran Status and Cancellation of Third and Fourth Quarter 2025 Property Taxes, and First and Second Quarter 2026 Property Taxes, for various properties listed in the agenda. 139, Authorization for the Allowance of Certain Tax Deductions for New Veterans and/or Senior Citizens for the 2025 Tax Year. 140, Authorization to Cancel Outstanding Checks. 141, Authorization to Insert Special Item of Revenue for the 2025 Cross-County Connections TDM Grant. 142, Authorization to Accept the Cash Management Plan. 143, Authorization to Participate in a Shared Service Agreement with Cherry Hill for Victims' Services Domestic Violence Response Team. 144, Authorization to Sign the Shared Service Agreement with Camden County Department of Health and Human Services for Project Save Program. Item 145, Authorization for the Moratorium on Specific Downtown Parking for the Holiday Season Between November 28, 2025, and December 31, 2025. The Authorization in 146, the Authorization for the Partnership of Haddonfield to Hold Candlelight Shopping in Downtown Haddonfield. 147, the Authorization to Approve General Event Permits at Various Locations. 148, the Authorization to Participate in Camden County Cooperative Pricing System Number 57-CCCP, that is not the old Soviet Union, but Bid B11, 2024, for the Furnishing and Delivery of Sodium Chloride and Pretreated Liquid Enhanced Sodium Chloride, better known as brine, on its second-year option. 149, the Authorization to Extend Participation in Camden County Cooperative Pricing System for Deer Carcass Removal Services. Item 150, the Authorization to Advertise for Request for Proposal for 2026 Professional Services. And 151, the Authorization to Sign Professional Service Agreements for Our Banking Services. Can I get a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda, numbers 136 through 151?
I do. Can I have, I have questions on 143 and 144?
Well, you can ask them, or we can move, and then you can ask the questions, or you can ask them now, but...
Let me ask them now. I'm gonna, I'll move it anyway. But, so for 143 and 144, can we speak to the actual service level agreement on those shared services? So, three questions for both. Service level agreements for both. What is expected of us, as the borough, to participate in this? And then, can we also speak to the cost arrangement of these shared services? Like, how much are we chipping in versus...
Sure. You could do 143, I'd do 144, or you could do...
Sure. 143 is the shared service agreement with Cherry Hill for domestic violence. This started probably about 15 years ago. I don't believe the cost, Jason, has increased since then. I believe, I believe we put in $1,000 or $2,000 that's budgeted every year. And what they have done is, they actually have a response team, so if we have a domestic violence issue, they are available to come out and talk with the, with, with the person that was attacked or, or had issues.
Victim witness.
There you go. There you go. I don't know why I didn't just turn it over to you.
It's mandated, it's mandated by the state that every municipality has a, a team, a domestic violence response team. It was cheaper for us to, you know, go with Cherry Hill, because they have a lot more calls than we do. So, our team, when we first went through this, the cost would be astronomical, and we don't have enough callouts to sustain the team. So, we entered into the shared services agreement, probably about 15 years ago, and it hasn't went up, as far as I know. I think it's been $2,000 for the last 15 years.
So, what's that service level agreement? So, like, how quickly are they supposed to turn up and...
We, we call them, they're 24/7, they're, they're there within an hour, and they advocate for the victim, they sit with the victim while we do all the paperwork, they explain the paperwork. It's just a friendly face, so to speak, when you're dealing with a domestic violence incident, that, that's, it's beneficial for the victim or whoever's, you know, involved to have an advocate. They know the paperwork, and they will also go to court with them as well.
And then, what is expected of us to participate in this, other than payment?
Just payment and call them when we, when we have an issue.
Is this a number that residents can call, or is this only for the police to call?
No, it's a police-only number.
And then, last one is, oh, you already addressed it, never mind. And then, is this any different for 144?
Which one's 144?
No, 144 is a completely different service. Does it have a cost share? I don't believe it has.
No.
Right.
Is this Project Save?
Yeah.
Yeah, Project Save.
Yeah, Project Save is run through the county. It's a shared service agreement that provides a diversion when offenders go to court. It's for addiction services. So, instead of, you know, incarceration, it's an alternative means for the judge and for the counseling services that the county provides for addiction services, rather than a diversion than the court process. The court staff mainly handles all of that. The police, we can issue cards for referral cards to them when they're incarcerated for them to call, but we found that it's, it's better that the court, when the people come to court, that the court staff actually reach out and do the paperwork, because, you know, we find that, you know, people suffering through addiction sometimes don't want to talk to the police, but when they come to the court, they're, they're more willing to, to get the services that they need through the court rather than the police.
So, there is no cost to this for us? This is just through the county?
There's no cost to this at all.
It's just for the participating municipalities, so this is yet another attempt to, if, if we find ourselves in a position of arresting someone for crimes in our borough for any reason, and they are suffering from addiction services, this is a diversion program, so that it allows them to not go to jail.
Correct.
Got it.
It is yet another last chance before they go. So, it kind of satisfies the, as, as we're adding services to have the social aspect of some of the homeless things that we're dealing with. This was attractive to me, but it also kind of fit that tough love when you're standing in front of a judge. It's your last getting out of jail free.
And we, we've been participating for the past three years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just make a notion, a motion, or a notation of, we have to, we have to set and vote on a memoriam to downtown parking. It is a revenue, and actually a big revenue generator for the Borough of Haddonfield, to suspend our parking enforcement from November 28th to December 31st. Since it's taking revenue out of the public's pocket, we have to approve it. The...
Just a clarification, that we are not earning money during the month of December.
No, I know. Yeah.
Clarifying.
And it's only, only for paid parking, the enforcement of, no, no stopping or standing, no, illegal parking is still enforced.
This is paid parking.
The, the paid parking will, will not be, you know.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Can you say the advertised, the Request for Proposal for 26, 2026 Professional Services? Are there any that are of note?
So, this is the time of year when we go out for our planning board and zoning board professionals, as well as Affordable Housing Counsel and Planner for the Borough, our auditing services, our labor council, our redevelopment council, and then also our risk management consultants.
And the selection that we chose for banking services, are there any highlights of why they're better than full?
They are providing a higher interest rate for us, guaranteed for a period of time. They are also providing up to $20,000 worth of payroll services annually. They have, they're doing the armored car forest for pick up our deposits. Those are mostly the highlights.
All right, thank you. And like I said, when we put this on the agenda, from time to time, there's, there is nothing wrong with the bank services that we had. We just go out to see what's out there, and what was out there was a higher interest rate and some administrative fees that they took on it that we didn't have to pay. So, thank you. So, I'll ask again, can I, can I get a motion to accept, or to, for resolutions under the consent agendas, 136 through 151?
Motion to approve Resolutions 136 through 151 under consent agenda.
I'll second.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. Next, we'll move to public comment on all other matters. I ask for, I will make the motion to open the floor for public comment on any and everything. The same five minutes apply. Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nicole.
In favor.
Commissioner Troy.
In favor.
Commissioner Seidell.
In favor. The floor, as they say, is yours on any matter.
Just real...
Hi, Lee.
Name and address.
Big Street.
Lisa Quancy, 305 Mount Vernon Avenue. I didn't have anything prepared, but I move to say, I want to thank the commissioners for their action taken as far as the Halloween celebration in town. I have spoken to dozens and dozens of families who live in all corners of our borough in the last couple weeks, and they are very happy and very satisfied for the decisions that you made. So, we appreciate that, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the reminder, Lisa. There will be letters going out tomorrow to all the residents of Washington Avenue. We'll be posting it on public, on social media, and they will have physical signs. There will be no parking on Washington Avenue on Friday for Halloween, so that kids don't be darting out between cars. And if, in the event, crowds do get large...